September 28th and at 4:30 PM. Let the record show that all members of the council are present as well as others in the audience. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda?
No.
I have one thing to add, and that's the opioid allocation meeting. First off, Councilwoman Greggrich has a change or revision to the long-range plan?
Well, it's just a completion of the long-range plan. We went through the long-range plan at our last meeting, but we didn't rewrite the introduction. And basically, if we could just go through this introduction, all I did basically was copy the last introduction, change the dates and the time spans. And the two highlighted areas on that second paragraph, it says, "To gather the input for the revised long-range plan, a community survey was mailed to every household in the village in June of 2022." Now, the survey results are detailed in Appendix A, and Lisa is going to do that. I was just gonna make sure that that's gonna stay.
That's correct.
And then, as we move, and then it says, "The committee's draft," okay, "the community survey responses were used to form the basis of the revisions for the new LRP. The committee's draft, the 23 to 27 LRP, was reviewed by the village council, amended as appropriate." And then it says, "Placed on the village website to solicit public comment." I don't think we're gonna solicit public comment because we've got a public comment. So, we're just gonna say that we amended it as appropriate.
Correct.
Okay. And then, I'll delete the rest of that sentence.
The only thing I would ask that we add on there, the composition of long-range committee, who was on it?
Okay, do you want, do you wanna just take this and update that?
Yeah, we just wanna update that and add the people who were on there and then the village council people.
Okay.
And that's just, all we have to do is just put that on there.
Where do you want that? Do you wanna do it or do you need to do it?
Probably on the front end of it.
Okay.
This is these, you know, the, this was the committee that put this together.
Okay.
And then have our list of all the people, and I've got them if you don't have them.
I don't.
Lisa's got them.
Okay, I'll get that. So, we wanna add committee members?
Yeah. So, they get credit for the work they did.
And it is on the, or will be on the website, correct?
Yes, it will be on the website. It will be on the website along with the committee. And I do wanna have the people recognized, and then also put the council on there so they know who to blame.
Thanks. Who's accountable, not to blame. Because we all have some lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
All right.
Do we need to make a motion to approve this? Okay. That's, that's that.
Okay. You're up now with the review of ETJ?
Yes, the subdivision, the family subdivision plans. Does everyone have a copy of the amended?
I don't know, I didn't get it.
I didn't get it. You guys don't have this?
Yeah, I've got a copy of the new one. Is it the same, same write-up as before?
It is the same write-up, but let me go here.
I have the, this one we looked at.
It's got all the highlighted comments. Got it at one point.
I'm sure I did. I didn't bring it.
And she doesn't, Jen's gonna make comments. Okay, let's move on down to that. I'll move on down to the next thing, then.
Do we wanna wait for Janet?
Well, we'll just, just M.O.U. will be pretty quick, and then we can go back. I wanted to discuss the memorandum of understanding for the Sandhills Municipal Planning Organization. We had a meeting, and we couldn't agree on how to do the votes between Pinehurst, Southern Pines, Aberdeen, and the rest of the communities. The current option is that every member of the organization will have one vote, and to begin, for any votes on things that come up. If there cannot be a unanimous decision on that, then it will take two members of the, of the organization to request a weighted vote. In the event that that occurs, Pinehurst will get three votes, Southern Pines will get three votes, Aberdeen and the county will get two votes, Whispering Pines, Foxfire, Taylor Town, and Pine Bluff will all get one vote.
Now, it's in the event of a unanimous vote, so it's not in, in the event of a, of a
Unanimous vote.
Majority vote.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, unanimous.
Unanimous vote. And I talked with the mayor of Whispering Pines, and I talked with the mayor of Proton of Pinehurst, and based on the findings from the assistant village manager in Pinehurst, that if we do not, we mean, do not sign the memorandum of understanding, we will be removed from the organization. And I don't think we want that to happen, no. So, I have told the mayors and mayor of Proton that at tomorrow's vote, providing the council supports me, that I will put in the vote for weighted votes. It would be, we need to get a, let's get a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I can then report to them that we have made that decision as a council. And we will do that.
I mean, it's on record that we did not want that, but, yeah, so, yeah.
Kinda have no choice.
We don't wanna run out for no fight in our face.
And that's with both the mayor of Proton and the mayor of the city. We had to do what we had to do.
Is there anybody that you think might drop?
I don't think anybody will drop out. I think everybody will eventually have to come around to this. Maybe Whispering Pines will keep their one vote against it, but if they do, that's one vote, and it just won't hold water. And he knows that.
We are small fish, so.
Yeah, I supported him last time, and I told him I couldn't do it now with this edict that we'd get, boot it out. Okay, all right, so we can go back now to the, any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to subdivision.
Okay, and this is the subdivision in the ETJ of family-owned, family-owned property and subdiv, limited subdivision. As we're going through, we already had said that the ETJ had five lot minimum, five acre minimum.
I agree with that.
Now, there is a family subdivision language we wanted to add to this. And the way this is reading right now, it says, "Family subdivisions' exception is for the creation of lots which are to be deeded only to immediate family members and cannot be deeded or resold to a person who is not an immediate family for at least," well, it said five years, but they want to change it to three, which is the same as the county.
The county.
And I think we should change it to three.
We should change it to the county.
Right, I think anytime that we should be in line with the county as much as we can.
Yes.
And then it says, "For immediate purposes, immediate family members are defined as husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, children, biological, adopted, or step, grandmothers, grandfathers, grandchildren, biological, adopted, or step, and then aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews," which I believe is the same as the county language. And then there was a comment on here that should we add in-laws, son-in-laws and daughter-in-laws? And I don't think we should, because that's not in the county language.
If it's not in the county language, we're not.
But husbands and wives are in-laws, technically, so.
I guess they're looking at widows or widow.
There's still, there's not, well, there's still wives, well, widows. But still, the county language does not include that, and I don't think we should be muddying up the county language.
It's the same.
Right. So, I think we should just.
If what you hear, there's no conflict.
Right, I think we should just leave it as it's stated and not add in-laws. Okay. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, sounds good. Then going through, the following requirements apply to family subdivisions. No party of the exception is exempt from the division, from the subdivision standards, all applicable requirements. No lot may be conveyed until the subdivision is fully approved. Says, "No lot under two acres will be considered for exception, and the minimum lot size in any family's subdivision is one acre." And I think this is what we wanted it to be, because it originally was four acres and two acres. And we said, "Let's just stick to the county." So, we wanna keep it just that way.
Absolutely, yes.
And then it says, "The proposed family subdivision shall not result, shall result in no more than six lots, including the original lots." And I'm assuming, and I know there's someone here from planning and zoning, I'm assuming that's the county language as well, or are we just saying that?
We said that, and I think through the cursory, when you first took a look at this, there was some discussion about maybe not having a minimum. The county does not have a minimum.
Does not have a minimum?
Not, not to my knowledge.
I have the county thing here, and I didn't think.
Why would we differ?
I think we differed because when you are looking at this county subdivision, they're looking at mass acreage.
Yes.
We're looking at much smaller, because we're already going to RA5, and this is really an exception within that RA5. And so, if you have a five-acre lot, or let's say you have a nine-acre lot in the ETJ, and you split that up six times, that's a tremendous amount of housing.
Definitely.
And, and this is probably gonna be more the exception than the rule, but that's why with, with the six minimum, we felt like that would, that would go with the long-range plan. It would also abide by our, I guess, community standards for not adding more than we can handle water-wise, because we do have the water issues. So, we, we felt like six was a good round number, and we certainly would, would go with whatever the council recommends, but we felt like six was a good number and would keep it standing with long-range.
There's some logic behind that, though.
I just, just wanted to bring that to people's attention. I have done good with it either way. It says, "The property included in the subdivision application shall not have been part of a family subdivision in the prior ten years. Each lot must have existing road or share an existing easement of 30 feet, and easement shall be 50 feet from streams, perennial streams. If there's a pond, you need a pond agreement." And this is all the same language that's in the county language, so I, I'm, this is all. If there's an individual well, you have to have a well management agreement, and that's really all county stuff. And then the following documents being signed affidavit of family subdivision of deed or gift, private road maintenance agreement, well management, that's all. I don't see any problem with this. Septic suitability, that's again, that's all county. Some of the limited subdivisions. This is limited subdivision that's not family, correct?
Correct. This would be for someone that had maybe seven acres. There are quite a few acreages in the, in the ETJ that are a little bit funky, but we didn't wanna cause a hardship to those people that had those acreages between nine and six, where they could keep their remaining five acres and sell off or keep, let's say you have, you know, seven acres, you wanna keep two and sell off five. We didn't wanna create a hardship for that individual that didn't necessarily want to subdivide for family, but maybe might have a hardship and need to sell because land is, you know, pretty lucrative right now, and it would allow them to split off one five-acre lot to stay within the land, stay within that RA5 zoning, but keep their two acre or sell that two acre off. It, it just enables someone that doesn't have the family subdivision exception to do a one-time limited subdivision, to split that land and able, to enable themselves to be able to benefit from the sale of their property.
So, we would end up with at least one, but then, there, well, see, the thing is, is on note five here, and, and I understood that, but on note five, it says, "Well, we could do at least one acre, one, one lot of five acres, or it could be split into two equal." And I don't like that split into two equal parcels, because now we're creating, we're kinda saying, "Well, five acres really doesn't matter." And I don't like that split into two equal. I think we should keep it at, you have to have at least one five acre. If you're gonna subdivide, you can't start having, you know, three and a half acre lots. I, I think we're defeating our own purpose, and we've done that before, and it's not what we should be doing. That's just my opinion.
I, I agree, and I was, your explanation really helped how we got to that. We're not getting, we're not getting bombarded by people wanting to do that. You guys are just trying to project what might happen. And I think that the, this does allow for, well, we are, we, we have rules that allow people to request exceptions, et cetera, et cetera, and I think we should just follow those. So, I, I agree with your exemption of that.
So, I would like to delete on line B.
Yeah, take that out.
In fact.
One must be a five acre, whatever.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right. So, the, the lot can only be subdivided in one way.
Right.
In one lot, so we, we have to reword that item number five. And then it must have its own road frontage or have an easement, and if the pond and the well and all that agreement is set to suitability, that's all standard. I don't understand the applicability section. I don't understand what that means.
Does this follow the county?
I did not write this portion. I wrote the other two portions. So, if you'll give me just a second to familiarize myself with it.
Okay.
I've read over it before, but I think this was kind of an afterthought, and I, and I think that where Mary was going with this was trying to make sure that people understood that this was an exception to the RA5 rule, but it would not be the rule, it's an exception to. It's not gonna be, you know, something that would apply to everyone, it would be in, in rare cases.
Hang on. Because, I mean, item four maybe is like defeating the purpose of, I, I don't understand why, why this is here, that's all.
Okay. We'll take another look at that.
Yeah.
Because this is supposed to be coming to a public hearing.
Yeah, so we gotta make sure we know, we know what we're doing before we do a public hearing.
And I, I, I think the limited subdivision I, I get.
The, the family stuff, if we can handle that.
And we know, and we know we wanted to do that. I just don't understand what this last section means.
Yeah, we have to get that last part, yeah, because I don't, yeah, I'm kinda with you that sort of talks around something, and then it sort of changes it.
Well, it says, like, number four, this is what really confused me. The division of a single ownership whose entire area is no greater than 10 acres into not more than three lots, where there's no street or right-of-way. It just, I don't even understand why we would even.
Even get there, yeah.
Because now we're not at five acres anymore.
I need to go back to page D.
Scratch that off.
I think that should be gone, unless someone can explain why it's there. Okay.
Okay.
That's, I think I'm done now.
For the moment. Okay, next thing I have up is the appearance committee. I met with four residents earlier this week, I think, yeah, a number of days, talk about what we want the appearance committee to be. And it was pretty much unanimous that we were looking for a more informal process, as opposed to the formalized one that's currently in our ordinance. And as opposed to being an enforcement organization, they would be looking at different projects that could help the village. And there are a couple of ways we could do this. And talking with them, just, one of the discussions was, we could give a task to the appearance committee, and they could then look and come up with a plan to do something like whatever, whatever the task we may have done. And then the other part of the committee would be that they could look at projects that they see and want. As an example, a discussion was about the flowers in front of the sign going into the golf course on Hoffman Road. The flowers now cover half the sign. So, they said, "Maybe we should go in and take the signs out," or not the sign, but the bushes out, the flowers out, see, see the sign. They were put there originally, they were supposed to be maintained, and they haven't been, they're supposed to be maintained by the club, and they've not done anything, and so let's just tear out the, and that, that's what their suggestion was. And there were some other suggestions that I relayed to everybody on email last night. One of the key things that I thought was really innovative was that they discussed a willingness to help Lisa determining the certificates of occupancy, where we could make a checklist, and they could check new bills just to look, to see if, you know, the landscaping plan is done, is, you know, whatever we have on the checklist, provide that to Lisa before she does an official certificate of occupancy.
But doesn't Lisa have to go out and check it anyway?
She doesn't.
She doesn't, she doesn't.
She doesn't. She realizes on certificates.
We have to do it in a very timely manner, too, because of the fact that, you know, people, they're going, oh, yeah, there can't be any delay, right, right.
But I think that was an innovative approach, something that could help the appearance of the village, because when the house is ready, it's ready, the building is ready, it's ready. A really interesting option for us to consider. We left the meeting, and the, the folks were kind enough to say they would come up with some other ideas and meet with us when, when they, when they've done that. But I think that could be a real help to us, another set of eyes that we currently don't have. You know, we did talk about trying to get some time from the engineers, see if we can rent some time from Pinehurst, but I'm not sure where that's gonna go. But this is an internal thing that could be done in an, in an easy fashion, in a friendly fashion. They can be the eyes of Lisa going out there and doing these things. So, I think that's something the council should consider, and maybe we'll come up with a plan, and when we get anything, if I get some more feedback from the committee, then I'll take that back to us, and we can discuss it, and maybe give a, give the first chore to the, or task to them to look at different plans, something or other.
I'd like to speak on this issue if I could.
Sure.
I think I made my opinion pretty clear on the last time we had this subject brought up, and I feel that while a flower committee would be beneficial to us to help us, you know, make the, make the village look nice, and I think it would be nice that they went out to do a job that a code enforcement officer might, we should probably have them doing that. Without giving them any structure, without giving them any power, then I think we're not exactly living up to our responsibility for those things that should be done in our village. We, we, we struggle with the fact that we don't have a code enforcement officer, we struggle with the fact that we don't, we, we have areas in our village that we're not happy with, and getting volunteers within the community to plant flowers, I'm all for that. I, I think that's great. I, I think that sprucing up the village is something that I'd like to see happen, and whatever they could do to help with that is, is fine, as a volunteer committee. But I think once we start tasking them with doing follow-up, regulatory.
No, 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 no.
They're going to go out to certify that a building is ready to be occupied, and then reporting back to Lisa, that's, that's no longer a voluntary committee, in my opinion. Now, we, we've now tasked them with something, but given them really no power, we've just simply said, "Would you mind, in your spare time, going out there and, and looking at it?" And, and I got, like I said, I, I think it's a great first step, maybe, for us to consider, but I think in, in the long run, we should kind of buck up and say, "We, we know that we have areas that need to be addressed in our village that relates to appearance, that things that are sliding by, that we just don't have anybody to do it, other than Don." You know, and I appreciate Don, you know, going out and, and doing his due diligence and reporting those, but in my opinion, we need to have a, a serious conversation about a group or a person or persons that do that for the village as part of their job.
And I, I agree with you. I do agree that, I think it's better positioned in, with an employee, and that's, that's that. Now to, then, I think that's a different conversation.
Yes.
But I think this appearance committee, what I would, what I really think I would love to see, and I think would be best for the village, is for the village, and I'm gonna use a phrase, puts their money where our mouth is, by saying, "Let's spruce up the village property that we can, like maybe the main, you know, Hoffman Road, do a little bit more trimming behind some of those creek myrtles if we can, if that's in the easement, maybe do some roadside filling in, even if it is DOT land, we still have to look at it every day." And I think filling it and seeding it and, and cutting back some of those overgrown trees so we have kind of, you know you're driving through Foxfire. I think that's the kind of stuff that I'd like to see done. I think the residents, everyone who drives through Foxfire would tell that something is being spruced up. So, why don't we start with what we can change with our dollar, and then, then we can move out to our, our property owners and say, "Hey, you know, you need to, you're not following this or, you gotta spend some money and do this, you have to do that, you have to plant, you have to do things." But I think it's important for the village to take the first step and charge this committee with saying, "What can we do on our main drags to make this, you know, a little more?"
Perfectly legitimate.
That's my, that's my, how I would love this committee to start. They, they can move on from there.
Perfectly legitimate.
And I think, you know, we're asking people to do things, and, and we should take the first step. It's kinda like with the fence, you know? We kinda let that fence go and go and go, and it was falling down, and.
It's gone.
It was gone now, but it was, it would be tough to enforce a, a fence ordinance, saying, "Your fence has fallen down, you need to fix it," when our fence looks terrible. And I don't, I just don't think, I think we need to take the first step on this.
Okay, that's fine. So, we can, we can agree to that, that, that's what we wanna do, that we as a council need to say, "Okay, this is what we want. We would like you to look at what you could do." And let's, let's look at that, and maybe at the next com, at the next work session, we come up with some ideas to pass on to the appearance committee.
So, are we opening this up to the residents and saying, you know, "Put in an application if you wanna be on this committee?"
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
I think we should.
I mean, we've done that, we can do it. I know we've got four people already volunteered, and that's.
I think we should open it up, at least. I, I think so, yeah. I think the more ideas, the better, especially when, you know, you're not, you're not enforcing rules on your neighbors, you're enforcing, you're, you're trying to say to the council, "Hey."
It was very clear in our meeting that we went into an enforcement.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair right now.
And I don't really think they should be code enforcement officers, they're not officers.
Right. The residents who want the place.
They really are not.
They're not, oh, yeah. And that was clear, that they didn't wanna do it, and, and we don't want them to do it.
No.
And believe it or not, we actually have five people that are code enforcement officers, whether they, believe it or not, every officer is a code enforcement officer in this village.
That's true.
Okay, all right, so, next work session, we'll, we'll come up with some, some plans and ask the, the committee to take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, part of the meeting date, we're having scheduling issues, and Jen can talk to this, too, but the people who wanna do this, wanna do it early in the day, like four o'clock, and I don't know if we get to target audience at four o'clock, to be able to get more input. And what do you guys think?
What are we talking about?
I'm sorry, what do you?
This is for the, this is for the presentation.
Remember the presentation they gave us to do it for the public?
Oh, yes, the public meeting, we're gonna have, other meetings.
So, I, I proposed the 17th of October, they couldn't do that. I proposed, they proposed the 18th, and I said, "Well, we're looking somewhere in the app, later on in the evening," and he said, "The early, the latest they could do it is four o'clock, because."
Yeah, look at that.
Other things after.
This is the.
The foresters?
Yeah.
Foresters, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, they're gonna present to us the next phase?
Yeah, they, we wanna get the feel for the village.
Yeah, that's.
And I think if we have a four o'clock meeting, we're not gonna get a good representation.
Not unless it's on the weekend. Unless it's on the weekend is the only time we can do a four o'clock meeting.
Yeah, they, they don't work weekends, I'm sure.
Well, see, and I think they're approaching this a little backwards, because he's like, "So, what has been the public comments?" And I said, "Well, we don't have public comments yet." And I said, well, we don't have public comments yet because we want you
Waiting for you to.
To make a presentation.
We have to.
I said, we're not gonna get public comments until after they hear
Hear what's going on.
What you're presenting.
So why won't, why can't they do it later?
They have more meetings.
They have other meetings.
Other meetings.
Every day, all the time?
Well, those are the only two dates that I gave them.
Oh.
Well, if you can, find out when, when's the latest they can come and then we'll see if we get.
On some other day.
Okay, well, the rest of October then is, I'm, I'm not gonna be here, so. Let's, we're pushing in November.
Okay.
The week of the thirteenth, I bet the week of, well, the twentieth is, uh, that's the week of Thanksgiving, let's start with that. I'll see what they have available the week of November thirteenth.
Okay.
So we're looking like at six o'clock?
Yeah, that'd be great, six o'clock'd be great, that way we can maybe get some more participation.
We're, we're not gonna get comments from our residents if they don't know what this calendar is about.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, so you'll, you'll be back to us on that? Okay, thank you. Lisa got, next thing up on the telecommunications tower, Lisa got a request for a telecommunications tower going down Foxfire Road. But.
Foxfire Road.
Yeah, Foxfire Road.
Towards Linden Road.
Yeah, towards Linden.
Right away.
That way.
That way.
Okay. In, in, in our village?
Well, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be ETJ.
Okay.
Uh, but our.
It not, okay.
Our table six dash two, six dash one doesn't authorize telecommunications towers in any zoning areas.
Can we actually do that? Is that even legal for us to do?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it was illegal to, to restrict telecommunications or cable, satellite dishes and things like that. I thought it was.
What do they, what are they looking, who, who is this?
Uh, I don't know who the tower maybe would be providing, I don't know, we put it up.
Oh, it's all.
Uh, don't know that either.
Yeah, but it's gotta be a private, it's gotta be a private citizen.
Yeah, private, it's a private, it's a private thing.
Oh, it's a private citizen.
Yes, private, yeah.
Oh.
Private tower.
A citizen wants.
No, it's not ours, but a company wants to put a tower up.
Why can't we, why can't we sell them, rent them the space on top of the long range?
I don't think we have enough space up there.
Not a big enough area.
I thought someone said something once that there's not a big enough flat area up there for them to put a tower, but I don't know that for sure. So are they looking to put this on someone's private property?
They would have to be private property.
Okay, but we could have a say as to whether or not they can do that or not?
Yeah, because it's zoning.
Okay.
Because right now it's not zoned to allow that.
Oh, okay.
So we would just have to send this off to PMZ and have them change the table to authorize it in RE, RA.
I'd like to know where it's gonna be. I'd like to understand.
Well, I think we should find out the location and height of the tower and all that. All the details. I'd like to understand the details. I'd like to understand the details.
Yeah.
Well, plus what the, what the, where, because it could be right next to somebody's house.
Well, that's up to them.
Well, I mean a neighbor's house, I mean a neighbor's house. It could be next to someone else's house.
Well, I think that would be totally shot their part.
Could we have them come in and give us a?
Uh, we could certainly, we could ask.
Because the thing is, and I'll, I'll say this again, because, you know, we've, we've gotten ourselves into issues before. We said we didn't want them. And now we're saying, oh, someone wants one, so yeah, let's have one. It's not been a good decision. So I guess why didn't we say no in the first place?
The original place, they originally wanted, initially before my time on the council, but I just vaguely remember, they wanted to put it right in the middle of town here.
No.
And they said no.
Well, that could still be the case if we, I mean, because if you say, oh, in the ETJ, the ETJ is throughout the entire town.
Oh, well, it's not in the, it's around the town. It's not in the town.
Well, you drive down Hoffman Road is ETJ.
And your ETJ, but it's not in the town.
And there's Foxfire right across the street, so.
But it's not in the village, I mean, that's what, what, they were gonna put it in the village.
Right.
And they said no.
Right.
So would it be appropriate for them to make an appointment with planning and zoning?
Well, that's why you should go to PMZ.
And then they would make a recommendation back to us.
That's what I said, you go to PMZ.
Yeah.
Go to PMZ, let them look at that, whether they wanna change the table to allow that in RE, RA, RA five, whatever.
Yeah, let them, we'd be willing to maybe rent them.
I'll have, uh,
Yeah.
I'll have Lisa tell them they need to get in contact with, with Mary and the PMZ board and see if they can set up a meeting, what they want to do. Because I'm sure the residents would probably like it specifically, say, a Verizon tower, because Verizon doesn't do what.
But I'll tell you what, if, I'd wanna know exactly where it was going to be
Oh, yeah.
and you'd have to get, I would love to talk to the neighbors.
Well, that'd have to be, I mean, that, that would be a part of it.
Because if I'm a neighbor, my neighbor's putting up one of those towers, I'm not gonna like it.
I think we're, I think we, we need to just look at the overall tree thing now first and let PMZ take a look at it.
I agree.
Then we can worry about the other side.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, maybe the next, well.
But can, but can I just make one final closing comment on that? It is that if we, if we say yes, if, if someone says yes, let's put, let, they can put a tower there. Just remember that opens the door for, let's say, the piece of property next to where Lisa Kivett lives. That's the ETJ.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That's an RA five.
Absolutely does.
So now we can, now there's, okay, a tower can go there. A tower can go anywhere on, you know, across the street on one of those pieces of property.
Absolutely.
And I think we said no for a reason. And unless, we have no cell service here, which, I don't know.
They don't for Verizon.
Well,
For Verizon.
Maybe Verizon ought to rent some space off the tower that exists.
I think they should look at the tower.
We have a water tower right there. But anyway, I think for us to say, you know, yes, we should put up a tower because someone's asking for one.
I'm not saying that.
No, 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 I'm saying we've done this in the past, we've made exceptions. And I think that you have to remember that if we open it up, it's all throughout this village. That's all I have to say.
All, all around the village. Keep, keep that in mind, all around the village. ETJs around the village.
But it's, it's right next to village property.
Could be.
Right. That's my point.
Yep, good.
All right, I'm done.
Okay.
Sorry.
One, one more thing here, is as part of the long range plan, we said we would start providing, uh, supporting documents with the agendas to be posted online for our meetings. Uh, so if you have anything that you're going to present to the council for a meeting, get it to Lisa, uh, a couple of days before the meeting, so she can get that posted on the, on the website. So it's available, so people know what we're talking about. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay, last thing I've got.
No, it wasn't Sunset Road entrance.
Is, um, I just found out about this opioid allocation meeting going on, on the third of October. What, what this is doing, this is a meeting held by the county to discuss the allocation of monies coming to the communities from the settlement agreement. Uh, is anybody interested in going to that meeting?
Do we qualify?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're part of the community, we're one of the, one of the municipalities.
Well, so they're just dividing it up?
They'll be, they're looking at how they're gonna divide it, so. I don't know. To be honest with you, I don't know what type of problem we have inside the village. The police would have an idea.
But I'm, I'm sure the function earmarked for now certain things that have to be done with the money, you just don't get the money.
I'm sure of it, I'm sure of it.
So then, now do we have to hire someone to do this? You know?
And I doubt there'll be that much money that we'd have to be able to support some money by hiring.
You said October third, like as in this coming Tuesday?
As in this coming Tuesday.
I won't be here.
I can't.
I won't be here.
Where?
Uh, the county courthouse.
You can't go, I don't think. Aren't you on the?
No, I can't either. I can't go either.
I won't be here.
Come on.
I won't, um.
Maybe the chief, maybe?
Yeah, the chief.
Chief?
Yeah, we, uh, I asked him if he.
He's working that day?
Yeah. Yeah, we might wanna ask the chief if he can go to.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I have a.
He should have been there to say, no, no, no. See, if you're not here, you get volunteered.
Yeah, if you're not here, you get volunteered. All right, that's the last issue I've got. Next up, Sunset Road.
It wasn't the entrance, it's just Sunset Road update.
What is Sunset Road, just, uh?
It's on, um, Hoffman. There's Woodland Circle, and then the next one is Sunset.
Okay, gotcha.
Cross my heart and hope. Cross my heart and hope.
Gotcha, okay, got it.
I was notified by a resident that we had two sinkholes in the middle of the road.
Sinkhole.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're, they're not potholes, they were kind of like sinkholes. You know, unfortunately with our roads, everything underneath our roads is sand.
Well, yeah.
And, and guess what?
How big are they?
Oh, they're fixed already.
Oh.
I just, that, that's where I was going with this.
How big were the sinkholes?
Oh, they were about this big and maybe about that deep.
Can they call Patrick?
They're done, they're fixed.
Okay.
But that was my, my comment, that they were fixed already very quickly.
Thank you.
Um, next one, Spectrum. Uh, again, notified by a resident, and thank you for that resident. I had, I took a picture of it on the corner of, well, not on the corner, across the street, Fox Ridge Road and Woodland Circle. And I understand these trenches have been there for about two years now. Found out that Spectrum dug some trenches, and I think in anticipation of the new builds out there, and left these trenches with these four poles, which are their lines, sticking out of the ground. Well, originally they had caution tape, that's gone now. And, and it's a hazard. So trying to, I called Spectrum, somehow they sent a technician to my house after I explained the little situation like four times. He checked my service, I'm doing very well. He would not.
I'll go to his layer, why not?
Yeah, yeah, well, I have to check your service so I can get paid for this visit. Okay. Uh, and then I'm taking you onto the east side to show you the problem. And he called his supervisor, and his supervisor's like, what are you doing there? This isn't a technician problem, no kidding. Um, so anyway, he bumped it up. Uh, they've been apprised of the situation. It needs to be fixed, those poles need to be removed or buried. Um, I cannot give you a date as to when that's gonna happen, but they have been alerted that this issue is there. And, yeah, if you ever take a trip back there, you'll see them. But, um, yeah, Fox Ridge Road and Woodland Circle, it's way back.
And four doors.
And, uh, so I really appreciate the fact that our residents are kind of keeping an eye open for these types of things. But, um, yeah, so I'm working on getting that taken care of, I'm not sure how long that'll be. But that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Good, police and fire.
All right, nothing on fire today, but police report part. There's been a lot of, um, social media complaints about speeding in the village, mainly on Woodland Circle on the hill, uh, Richmond Road and South Shamrock. Now, we do have two to three officers working from six o'clock in the morning till twelve midnight, every day, twenty-four seven, and after midnight, the county takes over. But the speeding isn't usually after midnight, it's usually rush hour, whatever. But I got a citation report here over the years. Two thousand nineteen, they wrote five hundred and eighteen citations. Two thousand twenty, during COVID, they did a lot less one-on-one contacts, so it's two hundred and sixty-three citations. Two thousand twenty-one, they did four hundred and fifty-four citations. Two thousand twenty-two, sixteen hundred and sixty citations. Projected this year, twenty-one hundred and fifty-six citation. That's six a day. So obviously they're doing some work.
Yeah. And these aren't written warnings they're giving?
No, that's actual tickets.
Okay.
Now, here's the inbound, outbound, uh, Woodland Circle on the hill. Well, it's the whole street. Eastbound going in, ninety-seven point zero are going within fifteen, uh, fifteen and thirty miles an hour. Two point seven eight are going thirty-one to thirty-five. So basically you got about ninety-nine point seven nine are that are in compliance within a reasonable amount. Uh, we got point two one exceeding thirty-seven to forty-five miles an hour. That's eastbound. Westbound, a little bit faster because they'd have to accelerate to go up the hill. But anyways, fifteen to thirty, eighty-five point seven five percent, we're in compliance. Thirty-one to thirty-six, twelve point seven four percent. So ninety-eight point five percent are within, are in that range. Over thirty-seven to forty-five, there were one point four eight. And there was one person that was forty, uh, forty-six to fifty-five miles an hour, and he got a big ticket. So I know there's complaints out there about speeding, and one of them was Harris Trucking. And I talked to Lieutenant Garner, he wrote one ticket to Harris Trucking, it was between five and six years ago. In fact, I called Harris Trucking twice, uh, once last year, once the year before, I told him, Dad, talk to dispatcher, and I says, can you talk to your drivers and make sure they're going the limit, because I've got a lot of complaints about them speeding, but in essence, they're not. If you get a big truck that goes by you at the recorders, at
Forty miles an hour.
Forty miles an hour, they're so loud, so much wind noise, you think they're going fifty-five miles an hour, but it's actually going forty. I used to drive a truck when I was a teenager, I know how it goes, because my relatives always told me I was speeding, but I wasn't. So anyway, that's my report on the, the police department.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Just a second. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Just a second. Okay, no, okay, now we have questions?
Actually, can we just go back to the ETJ?
Okay.
Real quick, just for clarity, and Mary's going to get me for not being prepared and I apologize. Um, if we could go back to the applicability section, um, just a parlor explanation there. That applicability, what she is pointing out is just number six. It's the blurb to include family and limited subdivision. What you're seeing, everything else there is our existing applicability in section twenty-one dash seven dash one point two in our UDO. So that applicability, everything except number six is in the subdivision section and applies to every piece of the subdivision. She was just adding number six to include the family subdivision and limited subdivision to to button up the UDO.
It is, that paragraph.
But then, but number four, how does number four, why is that there?
Because this is part of the overall subdivision applicability for our UDO. That's existing UDO wordage. That's in the existing UDO right now that applies to every subdivision.
Regardless of.
Correct.
But it ex, but excluding RA five, it has to exclude RA five because number four says you can end up with three acre lots.
I think that would be, that, that's in the existing UDO.
Well, then we have to change it.
What, what does it say in three acre lots?
Well, if you read number four, if you do at least a little bit of math, I think you can come up with.
Here, right here.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
That could be someone with a, a ten acre tract within the village.
But it's three lots.
Three lots, a ten acre divided into three.
And they could, under different zones, because they have several different zones in the village, they could subdivide that in, in that manner, within different zones of the RA, or, or different zones of the village, but not RA five. That piece does not apply. But what she was trying to add was number six, which is the addition of the family subdivision. So that's included in the applicability to kind of make everything come together.
I think we need to, I think we need to reword some part of this, especially on number four, to say that, um, that.
Well, this is not exclusively to RA five.
Well, that it doesn't apply.
It doesn't apply to.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. It should be, it should be somehow stated that, you know, with the exception of RA five, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes we have to, we have to amend our current language to.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Sorry for the confusion. I apologize for not being prepared.
Well, thank you for reaching out and getting it clarified while we're still here.
So I think with those changes, um, that's, then I think we can say with the changes we discussed.
Yeah, on the earlier.
Now, do you have these changes as we discussed them?
I've been taking notes.
Okay. So you'll rewrite this and get it back to us and we'll, that's what we'll.
We'll get that in a public meeting.
A week or early?
All right, okay.
We have any other comments? Please come up to the podium when I identify yourself and get you on the record here.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John, June's, my wife Jane, we're new here as June.
Welcome.
Love this community, the beauty, the residents really take care of their homes and just have one question.
Hmm, we, we just need your address.
Okay, on sixteen Oak Hill.
Oak Hill, New, okay.
And we are remedying the fact that it went for two years without the yard being touched at all. So we're working on that. You, you mentioned about enforcement and codes and then this is purely, uh, I guess you'd say, my interest and nothing further, how, what do your codes say about how many vehicles can be parked in one person's yard at a time?
We don't have a rule on that.
As long as they're licensed, they can.
As long as they're licensed.
As long as they're licensed and not in the road.
And they're not parked on the road, yeah.
Providing the stuff on the.
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.